I would like to call the October 30th School Board Meeting to order. Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Our Pledge of Allegiance tonight is presented by the JORTC Cadets at North High School, Malegrose Kiseita, Letitia Luna Ramirez, Soldad Villalobos, and Marley Hay. Would you please rise for the presentation of the colors?
Colored attention. Gary, colors. Forward, march. Colors, pull, left, face. Present, colors. Ma'am, request permission to post the flags.
You may post a flag.
Thank you, ma'am. Order, colors. Post. Post. Present, arms. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Right, face. Forward, march.
Please join me in thanking our North High cadets. They always do such a great job for us. Thank you very much. First item.
First item of business under student success, Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee.
Welcome. Thanks for coming on down.
Hello, I'm Ollie Cochran from South High Senior.
Hello, I'm Joyce Davis, a junior from also from South High School.
Firstly, I'd like to say we were glad to see President Logan and Vice President Albert at the meeting. We talked about post-secondary assets, the new graduation requirements starting next year. Members were allowed to circulate around the room, comment on the post-secondary assets, ask questions, and also mark which ones they're eligible for. The one that my group stuck to particularly was the two-plus high school athletics and activities. Some questions that popped up were what counts as an activity, how long do you have to attend the activity, you know, how much participation is enough, and does it have to be approved? Someone noted that one of the schools there was a lettuce club, was it? A lettuce club? And we wondered if that counted for graduation. You know, I have no particular stance. And of course, that was the most marked one for people who are eligible. My group thought it was the most easiest to achieve and that most seniors would achieve it by the time they were about to graduate.
One of the assets, the post-secondary assets that stood out in my group was the nine-plus college credit hours. We felt that college prep was very important in high school because a lot of students, they're not only, you know, preparing for their education in the present, but they're also looking towards the future. And we found that very motivational for students. One question that I always hear from my peers or in within my classes, you know, how is this going to help me in real life? Like, how is this going to help me in the future when it comes to figuring out what I want to do, my career path, my major? Just navigating through those majors really helps us and also gaining that competitive edge, you know, competing with different scholar, with different students for scholarships, and also setting those goals to create your roadmap to success, and also challenging yourself and standing out from your peers, from other students, and also to just gain a head start on your life and your future and your career path.
The majority of questions about the post-secondary assets were what is, what is, what is? Some that stood out to me is what is a gold scalp? What does CTE stand for? What is the work keys? Do all schools do exit interviews or projects? So I feel and the council felt that one very important thing to do is to teach the kids what they, what these things are and what they mean. More so, if I knew freshman year that community service would really help with those scholarship essays, I would have definitely worked on that more. So I think early, you know, freshman year or before, telling the kids, what are these things? What do they mean? How do you get them? What, how do they help you would be the most important. And the majority of questions were centered around that.
And I want to kind of elaborate on one of the questions, which was, is the 40 hours of community service cumulative over all four years? A lot of us were trying to kind of discuss to see like if that was enough over the all four years, which I feel like it's very important to build that community service initiative so we can build resumes and, you know, another thing of that competitive aspect when competing for scholarships and just basically getting those social skills by networking with other people and doing a service for the community.
Another major point the council spoke on is that these all do directly influence our lives after school, kind of in the title, post-secondary. A lot of kids can feel disenfranchised with the whole algebra two, you're probably never going to do it again. Well, these, you can see direct influences. For instance, AP exam score of three plus essentially is college credit. One of them is quite literally nine-plus college credit hours. So these have very real influences outside of school. Is that good for these?
Yeah, thanks.
That was the majority of our discussion for the meeting. Another thing we brought up was renaming Super SAC. Members were allowed to write potential names on a board. One of them was Super Duper SAC, which I feel does not properly meet why we were re-discussing the name. Super SAC Stars is in the similar vein. I wonder how different they think that is. Another one is Student Advocates to the Superintendent or SAS, Student Nominated Leaders, SNL, not to be confused with the show, and Student District Leaders, SDL, which is my personal favorite.
Aside from the other possible names, we also talked about the future topics that we're going to discuss at the meetings, building school spirits, waiting grades in honorary diplomas, so waiting those grades for people who are currently taking or thinking about taking honors classes, and reinstating driver's education, which is my favorite one, and how do we achieve higher standards? I feel like reinstating driver's educations and a lot of my peers thought about this too was very important. Going back into that, you know, learning a real-life aspect and learning things that we're just learning life skills and things that we're going to do in the future, you know, as adults.
I agree with her. Getting a driver's license can really tie into those post-secondary assets. In my opinion, very easy to imagine you want to know how to drive after high school, and it could also lead to careers with an SDL. I believe that is all the topics we have. Thank you all for letting us stand up here and talk awkwardly.
Well, thank you, and it was a pleasure to be able to stop by your meeting. What I said at the meeting, I will say aloud and for the public, we really appreciate the work that you do and that the Super SAC group does, and we'll let you name yourself whatever you want. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, under good news, within reach.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the board. It's good to be back with you. We have one good news item to share with you this evening that highlights a somewhat unique opportunity to focus on the success of all of our students, of students that need unique support, and that is the Within Reach program. During the summer of 2021, this program was created by the Special Education, the Student Support Services Department, to focus on students with disabilities who lacked sufficient credits. And it was born out of our strategic plan commitment to focus on all students and the need to be future-ready. So it's designed for high school students with disabilities who are served through an IEP and considered at risk of not graduating. Today, the program is in every high school, and it's also got a high-impact version that we feature as part of our robust summer school option. And that's where I have tended to hear so many amazing stories of student success as we strive to reach the kids who need that extra nudge in order to be able to graduate. So here from Student Support Services is Ms. Nikki Sealy, who is Director Interrelated Services, and she will introduce you to a guest from Hamilton that is doing some work in our district and tell you more about Within Reach.
Good evening, Superintendent Beilefeld, President Logan, and Vice President Albert, and all the other board members. Thank you for giving us just a few minutes of your time to talk about this wonderful program. With me tonight, I do have Jose Martinez. Jose is currently an administrative intern over at Hamilton, but before he was there for two and a half years, he was an integral part of creating our program. As Wendy mentioned, our program is for students with disabilities on an IEP who are at risk of not graduating, and it is a credit recovery program that is a little bit more paper pencil portfolio-based than just a computerized program. It's just another option for kids. Obviously, the traditional recovery credit is still an option. She, like she said, we are currently in every single high school, and we do have hosted the last two summers of a pretty intense summer program. So before I get into the numbers, which is like the most impressive part, I'm going to let Jose give a little bit of an update at how this whole thing kind of was created.
So like she said, I'm currently at Hamilton, so I kind of had to step back and when I was at West. I started at West and started at the district at the same time, and the first week of me being there, they presented the program and said, hey, we have a graduation problem that we want to work on, and we want to put this program together. And so it was a continuation of what happened in the summer, but we did develop it a little bit more, so it met the needs of, it met the needs of what schools are doing. So we started at Wichita West, knowing that at that building, we had to do something to change or increase the graduation rate. From there, it kind of went on through the whole district. That September 2021, six students, so that first year, six students that were continuing from that summer graduating, that was just the beginning of the program. And, but like they said, the program focuses on students with disabilities, students that are on an IEP, but through the program, it was developed during COVID, so it met a lot of needs, a lot of the flexibility that was needed and a lot of the flexibility that a lot of the programs that are being developed and are developed in Wichita, it meets the needs of different students depending on their backgrounds, depending on where they're coming from. But that's what I liked about this, this program. You can get a student regardless if they are missing a few credits, to a student that missed a whole year of school and still give them a roadmap and saying, you're here and we're, you're going to, we can get you to this point, and you can give them some kind of hope. That's what a lot of students needed. So the program did make a difference in students' lives, not just at Wichita West, but it kind of across the whole Wichita Public School District.
So our program did start in the summer, continued on and throughout the school year. So during last year, our 21-22 school year, we had 76 students participate across the district. Those 76 students recovered 150 credits, which is 300 classes. Forty-seven seniors participated, and we had 39 of them graduate in May, and then six of them continued on with us during the summer. Our summer program, which recovers almost as much as our school year, we had 118 students complete at least one portfolio for 243 credits or 486 classes recovered. These kids are coming from nine to two or three every single day, sitting down and trying to grind out some of this work to get themselves back on track. This past school year, we had 218 students completed at least one or more portfolios. 123 of them were seniors, 96 graduated in May, and 11 additional ones continued throughout the summer and by, and graduated by September 30th. That was 483 classes. And just like all of our, we know it's important to hit our seniors, but we also don't want that snowball to happen to a lot of our students. So this past summer, we really ramped up all kids being able to come on who has an IEP. We had 131 students complete at least one portfolio for 259 credits this summer, which is 518 classes. So the grand total, if you're a math person, over the last two years and two summers, we have recovered 1,090 credits, which is 2,180 classes for our students with disabilities. So, thank you. Definitely quite a few people on this. With that, that is all the information we have, if anybody had any questions.
We don't have our computer system tonight, so I will have to depend on people raising their hands, but I'm, Ernestine?
I'm so excited and proud, and I think that one of you said, the biggest part of this is hope, that you set up a line that they can do it, and you give them the hope. I am so proud of this program. I think it's absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, you've given our kids a way to graduate when they didn't think they could. So thank you very much for your hard work on this to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next item, public communications.
Kendra Holly. And I will, again, you have three minutes. Once you get up here, if on the registered topic, it will not include personnel matters concerning district employees or matters that would violate the privacy of students. And we welcome you back. Thank you very much. Oh my goodness, a whole packet.
Well, it's, there's two, there's two packets in each of those envelopes, so.
Share.
Yeah, well, I mean, you could just pass, take one, pass one down.
I have one of yours to pass down.
Did everybody get one? Because I made sure I had 12.
I think everybody's gotten one now. Thank you very much.
Can I be in now?
Yes.
Okay. This is, I think, my third meeting here. I thank you once again for the opportunity. The last two meetings, I've given numbers, I've given statistics, and I've given requests for the school board to consider the stocking Albuterol inhalers and spacers in the schools for the kids with asthma. Now what I want to do is take it one step further, just like they said, you know, you give kids hope. I've always told my kids, when you are putting me forward, give me all the tools I need to be successful, or you're setting me up for failure. That's where I want to offer my services to Wichita Public Schools. If we can get the Albuterol, registered respiratory therapist, and I'm a certified asthma educator, I will donate my time to USD 259, whether it be the teachers, whether it be the students, faculty, coaches, whomever, to educate them so that we can be successful in this. I will give you just a little background about asthma educators. What I do is I educate family, whether it be the patients or their family members on the medications they are taking, when they're supposed to take them, what does what, how they should take them. Sunday night, right before I got off work, 10-year-old asthmatic came into the hospital, and he had never heard of Albuterol or spacer. His mother knew about Albuterol, but she didn't know about a spacer. I was able to educate her, educate him, not only to get a thumbs up, but he gave me a hug. That is what I'm wanting to do for Wichita Public Schools. I remember when I was in elementary school, the one thing I never got was a perfect attendance. Why? Part of, there were days I missed because I didn't have medicine. Imagine those asthmatics not missing school because I may have ran out of medicine at home, but I know there's an inhaler at school should I need it. I really do encourage you to read those books I gave you and look in there, because there is a program that the CDC offers that will pay for the medication. We just have to enroll in that program, and of course, I can do that, you would have to vote on that, but I really do encourage you, and I also left my business card on there. If at any point in time you have any other questions regarding asthma education, impact Wichita, which is the business I own, please call, email, text, whatever. If I don't answer, leave a name and number, and I will get back to you. I do thank you again for your time, and I know this is something we can get done together.
Thank you very much, and we do appreciate the information, and we do read it, so thank you. Next item. Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy?
This is actually to address to the board and perhaps Kelly also. Is there a reason why we don't have Albuterol in our schools? This is the third time we've heard him present, and I'm not sure I'm missing something or if this is something for another time?
So I believe Kimber has spoken with Mr. Holly after the first, after the first time he spoke. There's some legislation that we feel like we have some liability exposure for this, and there's some legislation that's been in Topeka that hasn't been passed that would relieve us of that. But until then, until we have some coverage legally as far as administering this, our stance as a district would be we won't.
But a child can bring their inhaler to school and keep it in the nurse's office.
Right.
So, but the school does not provide it at this point, so it's stuck up in Topeka right now.
Right, and I can give you more information later, but that's the gist of it.
Yeah, that'd be great. I just needed a clarity. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Unfortunately, sometimes Topeka does hold us up on things, so. Okay, next item.
Next item, under education, every student future-ready strategic plan, goal number four, schools are trusted as safe places.
Kelly?
All right, this is the fourth goal and the fourth, last presentation for the 2018-2023 strategic plan. So this will wrap up all of our information that we've been learning about, the current strategic plan, which leads us in two weeks to see our new one, at least the draft version of our new one. So excited that Dr. Evans and Ms. Moses are here tonight with us. They're going to, they're going to knock it out of the park, haven't they?
Thank you.
World Series reference there.
I have no doubt of that, knowing the two of you, so thank you for being here.
Well, thank you, and good evening, board members and Superintendent Beilefeld. I am Vince Evans. I'm your Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services. I am here tonight with my amazing colleague and co-presenter, Ms. Terry Moses. She is your Director of Safety and Environmental Services.
Goal number four, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate the fact that some of you and your predecessors had the foresight to include safety and the communication of safety in our strategic plan. So we're going to cover it this evening, and anybody who's ever heard me talk about safety know that there's two key components to safety in the school, and that's what a lot of people can refer to as the bricks and mortar side, the things that we add on the structure side of a building, of a facility to make it safer. And then there's also that relationship side, and that is the caring, that is the programs that we create and build. You just saw a wonderful example of that in Super SAC. Our students who are connected, who are involved, who care about other students. So we're going to give you a brief summary of a handful of programs that cover both that bricks and mortar side and also the relationship side.
And I'll say while it's the, while it is the two of us presenting, as you all know, safety is everyone in USD 259's job, and it's something that we take very seriously. For that reason, there are many, many initiatives that we could discuss tonight. However, for the sake of time, we've selected six that you think that we might find of interest. There's a preview of those six up on your screen right now. We're going to be talking about our partnership with the Wichita Police Department, our secured entryways, our weapons screening systems, our mental health intervention team, some new curriculum that we have within the district, and our school security officers.
We're going to start with a very timely topic, and that is WPD substations, because it is on the agenda after we get done. As you know, a little over two years ago, you approved the sale of land adjacent to AMAC for the, to the city of Wichita for the purpose of adding a Patrol East substation. And I think, as you know, you've watched that building grow up and continue to grow, and we're happy with that partnership. And like I said, you have on your agenda later, later this evening, the possible sale of additional land to the city of Wichita for a Patrol North substation.
Second topic that we're going to discuss is our new secured entryways. And for this slide, I'd ask everyone if you could visualize a school that you attended when you were a child, and those in the audience can play along on this one too. So everybody got a school in their head? Here's what I want you to think about. What did it look like when a guest entered that school? I can think of four different schools that I went to when I was a child, two elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school. And of all four of those, when a guest entered the building, they had access to the whole building. They were supposed to go to the office, and I think most of them did, but that was an act of choice that they had to make. They really did have access to the building as a whole. So our times have changed, and our facilities need to change with those times. So we want to control who has access to our buildings. We want to make sure that people have a good legitimate reason to be there and that they're going to be safe actors when they're within the building. So that's why we created these secured entryways. We've made 11 of them so far this calendar year. Those new secured entryways are Beach, Gammon, Jackson, Linwood, Seltzer, Allison, Mayberry, Meade, Pleasant Valley, Levy, and Curtis. You might have seen on Superintendent, three questions with Superintendent Beilefeld, the Curtis Secured Entryway was recently featured. That was a very nice little piece there, Kelly. What we have here is not Curtis. What you can see on your screen is the Pleasant Valley Middle School Secured Entryway. And just to walk you through how this happens, I know you all know because you're out regularly visiting buildings, but if a guest comes up to the secured entryways, they're outside those double doors, they press on the intercom button. Within the office, they use their intercom and camera system to make sure there's somebody that actually has a reason to be there. If they think they are, they let them through those two double doors. They enter the office, they're greeted by the staff, and the guest has to use the hall pass system. Hall pass system is checking for two things. Are you on the district restricted list, or are you a registered sex offender? If you clear both of those hurdles and the office staff thinks you do in fact have a legitimate reason to be there and are a safe person, they will give you a temporary ID, and they will buzz you through to the main part of the building, which is a different set of doors on the other side of that picture. And that's how you enter a building, through a secured entryway. There's 22 more of them to go. All 22 of those are currently in the design phase, and we are still on track for our original plan, which is to have those completed within the next two years.
Another thank you to the board. Last year, we came to you with a request for an advanced screening system. This is Heights High School, and this is just a normal morning of students coming in through our screeners. You appropriated 1.5 million for these screeners. To date, we've spent just under 1 million for those. Every one of our high school buildings has a metal detector or a screener in it right now, which includes 53 of these lanes, which is two posts, as you see people walking through. We have been successful since that time we installed them. In the 22-23 school year, we stopped two firearms from entering our buildings. In the 22-23 school year, we stopped two firearms from entering our buildings. And then so far, in the 23-24 school year, we have stopped two firearms from entering our buildings, one by a student and one by a parent.
Next, we have the Mental Health Intervention Team. This is a program that we do with the Kansas State Department of Education. We've been involved with it since its inception back in 2018. And I always like to explain this program with a story. Makes me think back to the time when I was a principal, didn't have this program, but my colleagues and I within our building, we would identify students who needed mental health support. And I'm not just talking support that you would provide within a school, I'm talking clinical support, clinical therapy, medication support, things of those nature that we don't provide typically at school. So we would identify these students, we'd work with parents to say, hey, do you agree as a family that this is needed for your child? And if they did, we'd help them to get things established, get these appointments set up. We do that through places like Calm Care or the Mental Health Association. And sometimes that worked really well, but other times you'd run into barriers. You'd get these appointments established, and then mom or dad would have to work, or we didn't have transportation, or just life happened, and we didn't get to those needed appointments. So what the Mental Health Intervention Team does is it takes that barrier out of the equation. We're allowed to invite staff from one of those services, we use Calm Care, to come into our buildings. They set up office space within USD 259, and if families are supportive and sign up and agree to all of this, they attend these sessions during the school day. Takes the burden off of parents, and those services just naturally happen as a part of the school day. We are currently, I said we've been serving this since 2018, and we have served eight-hundred-twenty-seven students within the past twelve months in this program. They've received needed clinical mental health supports. There's extra benefits that come with that as well, though. For example, of those students, seventy-two percent of them have exhibited improved attendance during their time in the Mental Health Intervention Team program. And currently, this program's in thirty-six of our buildings.
Our students that were here before us talked about curriculum and learning things that are important in life. And one of the things that I have found is that all safety curriculum is important for life. And so we're gonna emphasize two kind of safety curriculum programs that we've added recently, unfortunately because of need. Eight years ago, we created a run, hide, fight video to train our students and staff about how to respond to a active shooter situation, and unfortunately, they continue to happen throughout our nation. When we were looking at feedback in regards to those, that training, we heard that we didn't have anything that was age-appropriate for our younger students. So at the beginning of this school year, we added an age-appropriate curriculum, and that was the Stay Safe Program. As it said, if there's danger, let Winnie the Pooh and his crew show you what to do. And it included a curriculum for our instructors as to how they could talk in an age-appropriate way to our younger students about a situation like a violent intruder. Again, unfortunate that we need it, but it's something that's important not only in school but in real life today. Second, the other thing that we know is happening nationwide is the fentanyl issue and the fentanyl situation that we find ourselves in. And so late last year, at the end last, the end of last school year, and at the beginning of this year, we created a fentanyl curriculum that includes telling people the facts about fentanyl and basic information about fentanyl. Again, we created a curriculum so that our secondary staff could sit down and have honest conversations with our students. This is taught through the advocacy program.
And last but certainly not least, we have our new security positions. We have colleagues all over this district, be they teachers, paraprofessionals, social workers, counselors, and on and on and on, that are great at de-escalating intense situations, at helping agitated students to get regulated. But sometimes, we need extra layers of support, and that's exactly what our security positions provide, an extra layer of support. It's just one way that we accomplish that here in USD 259. What I don't want to give you is the impression that these folks are just people that come in and be the heavy, and that figure of authority. They're capable of doing that in an intense situation, but I'm thinking back to a visit that I had to Grifonstein Wells earlier this month. I was visiting a classroom, and there was a student in there, very agitated, very upset. Teacher was working to get him calmed down so they could go on with their learning, and she was just struggling to do so. He was extremely agitated. So she used her walkie-talkie, she called for support, asked for somebody from the security team to drop by, and he didn't come barging in the room, didn't come busting through the door, walked in calmly, quietly. He obviously had a relationship with this student. He approached him, they talked in a low tone, the rest of us couldn't even hear what they were discussing, and then he said, it's okay if we go for a walk around the building. And they did, and he came back in, regulated and ready to learn, and that's one of the things that makes me so proud of these folks. In recent years, we've added on ten new security personnel at ten different buildings. It's an effort that we're, we're very proud of.
Same slide, beginning in it? In my speech class, they said to tell you what you're gonna tell you, tell them, and then tell them what you told you. See, I learned something in speech class. As I said when we started this, this is a two-way program. It is about the bricks and mortars and the stuff that we need to do in to improve the safety in our buildings, but it is also so much about relationships. He told the story, so I'm gonna tell the story. As I was walking in the building tonight, after five o'clock, a teacher happened to be walking in with me, and she was in a hurry, hustling in the building, and said, oh, I forgot something, I've gotta run in, and I've gotta get it, and she was obviously in a hurry. When we got to the entryway, there was a student sitting on the bench in the entryway, you're all familiar with it, head buried in his phone, and she took the second to stop and say, hi, hey, everything okay? You got your ride? That was it, just that little second of time, and he looked up and smiled, and to me, that was a relationship, and his smile was just a way for saying, of him saying to her, thank you for caring. Thank you for caring.
Well said, Ms. Moses. I think that does bring us to the end of our presentation for tonight, so at this time, we'll stand for any questions you might have.
Stan?
Do we still do the survey? And I don't even remember exactly what time of year we do it, basically asking students, teachers, and do we even ask families? I don't remember.
At one point, we did, yes, and that's called Safe and Civil. The statute, the Kansas State statute changed two years ago that made, put some hurdles in our way. And so this last year, we did not do it for students because of that. We do continue to do it with parents and with staff, and that just concluded. Normally with parents, we ask them during the first round of parent-teacher conferences if they will complete that survey.
What was the, what was the percentage of the last survey we did among the parents and staff?
Parents was low. It's hard to get parents to spend time with it. I do not recall the numbers with staff, but it was what I would, we would consider reasonable. In other words, it would be viable information.
And what was the percentage that said they felt safe, or?
It met our, our original goal was to be over ninety percent, and we met that goal and exceeded it.
That's even better than I was thinking, because I was, I had eighty-nine stuck in my head, but it was above ninety?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hazel?
Yes, my question has to do with the new security positions. So you said there were ten new security guards. Are those created positions or positions that are filled?
They're all filled. We are a hundred percent filled in our security department.
So we have no openings in security?
None.
Oh, okay, good, great, thank you.
I'm seeing no other questions. Thank you, and I agree wholeheartedly, safety has got to be part of our plan, because if kids don't feel safe at school, if parents don't feel safe sending their kids to school, kids don't learn. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item, consent?
Kathy, do you have anything to pull?
Yes, D4.
I'm sorry, what? C?
D4.
D4, okay, thank you. Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Hazel?
Nothing to pull.
Diane?
I have nothing to pull.
And I have nothing to pull this evening. Stan?
C1, the Early College Academy.
Okay, and Ernestine?
I have nothing to pull.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept all the items except D4 and C1?
So moved.
I think I heard Julie first, so I'll take yours as a second, Stan. Please cast your, oh, we can't cast our votes, we have to raise our hands tonight, I apologize. Raise your hands if you accept all the items other than those two. Motion passes seven-zero. Kathy, D4.
Well, it's about time. It's about time we got our police substation in the northwest part of Wichita. Thank you, City Council. I have vacillated back and forth, and up and down, and all over the place, because this directly affects me personally, because I live one block from Country Acres on Denmark. I have spoken to the neighbors as the police officers have, and Councilman Frye has also spoken to them to get their feedback. This was done so well, police officers went house to house with a postcard that shared with the community member what was happening and invited them to come to an initial meeting at Northwest High School with maps. And there was lots of questions, and of course, the first thing that I would say is we people, the species of human nature, is to resist any change. That is so hard, of course, unless you're changing clothes, right? So, but anyway, I had to throw that in there. The change, the resistance to the change is the hardest, but the change in and of itself is not. This is a wonderful idea. I'm very excited about this. Although I vacillated back and forth, I really had to look at it, and there are, the ones that it's gonna affect are directly the people that live on Country Acres, and they're facing west, their house is. But I have been assured, as they have been assured, that it's not gonna be a junk spot. This is gonna be a very well-taken care of property. I do know that the police officers who will be in this building, working this facility, will be very conscious of the neighbors. Plus, we're gonna be a lot safer now with Northwest High School, and I'm gonna spill the beans with you, Superintendent Beilefeld, wonderful creative idea to create a pipeline for those students that might wanna be involved in law enforcement, another CTE coming up. I just, I see it, I can envision it with you. I'm excited to see something continue down there. So again, it's about time, it's been in the works for ten years we've been talking about this, so I'm, I'm very glad that it's finally come to this. We support our police officers. This will substantially support them because they have outgrown the building on Elder and Central. So it is with great pleasure that I would like to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, motion was made by Kathy?
I'll second.
Okay, and before we vote, I want to recognize that we do have Brian Frye in our audience tonight, our city council member that lives in this region and serves them. We appreciate you being here for our discussion, thank you. Are there any questions before we vote? Okay, let's vote. If you're in favor of the sale of the property to the city of Wichita for the police department, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you very much. Stan, C1.
Thank you, Cheryl. I just had a couple quick questions. I think I know the answers to them, but I thought this was a good opportunity to give the public, the general public, some information about early col, our Early College Academy efforts. And I'm, I'll start with the superintendent, and if he needs, bring up Lauren, I'll leave that up to you. My first question is, basically, what is the Early College Academy, and how long have we had it now?
Well, I will, you know, because she's a doctor and has a doctorate all calling her, she's smarter than I am, but.
That's why I was, that's why I was stringing the intro out. I was hope, I thought she was gonna come straight out.
I did have my Dr. Hatfield to speak and just share a little bit about ECA and then answer your other questions, so, thank you.
So Early College Academy is at Northwest High School. It is, we are now have our full cohort of kids in Early College Academy, so we've been in there for, for four years. And this is a program designed for kids to start college early, so they can earn over fifty hours of college credit by being part of this program. There's, it's almost a mini-college application to apply in the process, and they accept fifty kids a year, so it would, it adds two hundred students to Northwest High School as a result of this program. I actually texted the principal and one of the APs that's over the program, and I said, do you have any fun facts I can share? Because, you know, I like fun facts. And they said the class of 2023, Early College Academy students earned 2,259 college credit hours, just in the class of 2023, and just the students in that program.
So if you have a, if you're a parent out there, and you have an eighth grader this year, and is this time to apply, or do they do that same time when they apply for magnet schools? I forget.
That's a great question. So the application just opened, and it is, if you go to the USD 259 website, you can find it there on the Northwest High School page, or if you go to the Northwest, or if you go to the USD 259 website and you search for Early College Academy, it will pop up, and I actually clicked on the application just this afternoon, and it is there, and the application deadline for that is in January, so a few months to get that application in if you are interested in that program.
And what is the cost for a student to take that college course through Northwest High School?
Zero dollars.
Zero. So the average, I think the average credit cost at WSU this year was 241, so if they earned up to fifty-seven credits, that's a savings of almost thirteen thousand dollars for that family.
Yeah, actually, if you go on the website, if you're a little bit of a nerd, which all of us have an inner nerd somewhere, they have the presentation that they give to the eighth grade students. So Northwest's Early College Academy team goes to all of the middle schools and talks to the kids about this program. And in that presentation, it shows you how much savings you have if you attended KU or K-State or WSU or Friends. So it shows you on there, here's how, here's how much this would cost you if you attended those universities and earned this many hours, and here's how much it costs you here.
And when this?
Which is zero.
And when the student takes the course, they are treated like a college student. There's just, whereas we may give them a little extra help with tutoring, or, well, there's, there's college tutoring too, but, but, I mean, they're treated like a student, correct? I mean, just because you enroll doesn't mean you're gonna get credit and doesn't mean you're gonna pass. You're gonna have to prove that you can pass that class.
Right, they are simultaneously a student at Northwest High School and at Friends University, so, and they, they, some of the students, like some of the seniors now, they spend half their day at Northwest, and then they spend the other half of their day at Friends taking courses. We also offer the students the opportunity to take classes in the summer between their, after their freshman year. So they take, they go to Friends and take college classes on Friends campus in all of the summers after their freshman year, sophomore year, junior year as, as part of this program. They have a Friends ID, and they have a Northwest student ID.
Do we ever have a situation where, because this could also be a great learning experience, it's a great way to find out fairly early in your high school career whether or not college is going to be your thing. Not everyone's designed to go to college, or the desire to go to college may hit them far after high school, which most, a lot, a lot of people, that happens to. Do any of our students go a couple semesters and, and then say, no, I'd much rather learn to become an electrician or a plumber, and I'm not interested in college, but this, I'm glad I had this opportunity? Or are we finding most of them stick with?
Most of them stick and graduate. This year, the class of 2024, I believe there are currently forty-three students that are still in the program and still participating. Now, some of the, not all of those, the other seven, they didn't all drop out of school. They're, hey, this isn't what I thought it was, or some of them have moved to other states, you know, things like that, that we, that we can't control. But this is an excellent program and a great opportunity for students in our district that's pretty unique to Wichita Public Schools.
Thank you, and that, and obviously, these are kind of leading questions, so obviously, I was wanting an opportunity to promote this program. It's a win-win situation for our students, it's a win-win situation for everyone involved, and thank everybody at Northwest for all the efforts they put into this, and I really encourage. And I really encourage parents to check out this program if you feel that you, your child will someday, someday go to college.
Kathy?
Oh, and thank you, Friends University.
Yes, Dr. Hatfield. Are other schools going to be involved in this down the road? Or is it just Northwest?
So we are looking at other options at other schools. But this is also exceptionally expensive, right? And so we have to look at, how are we going to continue to fund this, right? Because it costs us about $115,000 a year. If you add, we pay in the fall, we pay in the spring, we pay in the summer to, to pay for all of the, the credit hours. And so you have to look at sustainability options. We actually have a meeting this Friday to create something potentially called Chucker Pathway out at Southeast. But more of the other partnerships are adding classes that are taught by the high school teachers that count for college credit. Whereas this one is more about going on to the actual campus and taking the classes. So there's multiple ways to get college credit besides just this model, which can help us.
I guess I didn't make my question very clear. This is giving the students the hands-on opportunity of what college life could be like for them when they attend these classes. Northwest High School is the only school that this is offered to, correct? No?
Well, this program is available to every student in our district.
So the other students can come to Northwest to participate in this program? Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's not just a Northwest program. This is a district program that has housed at Northwest.
Okay. Yeah, it was originally housed at Northwest High School because they had the physical space to take on extra students. But students from all over the city are part of this program.
Okay, I misunderstood because we're just talking about Northwest. I thought it was just exclusively to Northwest. And also, it says that it's funded with non-federal grants and gifts. And maybe one day we can turn it into a foundation and then it can be self-sustaining.
We would, we would love that to be true.
I would too, yes.
I would also add, some of the costs that Lauren's referring to are transportation costs. So because we do open it up to every student in the district, we transport kids. So there's, there's some supplementals we pay. We transport students to Friends Campus in the middle of the day during the school year. So in addition to the tuition that you approved tonight, there's other, other costs that are part of it too.
Well, I'm terribly grateful that our colleges locally are in partnership with our schools because like even Stan said regarding something else, it's a win-win situation. So thank you to the colleges and thank you for working this program.
Hazel?
I just have a quick question as far as like books and is that all included? And do we pay for that as well, all the books and supplies that they need?
Some of the, the ones taught at the high schools are, you know, high school textbooks, but even the ones on campus. I don't know if Friends works with us on that cost or I don't know about that.
Yeah, we pay like student technology fees, all of that. So their, their, their cost right now is literally zero dollars.
Awesome, thank you. Julie?
Dr. Hatfield, could you just speak to our district's program? You referred to it just a few minutes ago when you talked about that we do have some teachers in high schools that their qualifications are such that they can teach college-level courses. Would you just speak to those offerings as contrasted or compared to what we're doing at Northwest? So that we can inform the public about kind of the all-inclusive opportunity that their students have relative to college hours?
Absolutely, that's a, that's a great distinction between the two, kind of what Early College Academy is and what happens somewhere else. So at our other high schools, if teachers have a certain number of credit hours in their subject area at master's level work, then they qualify to teach dual-credit classes at the high school. So if I'm a high school math teacher and I've got 18 credit hours of master's level work in mathematics, then I can teach college algebra and the kids can get credit at the university that I, that we partner with as well as at the high school. That happens at all of our high schools all over the city. Common classes are English four, for kind of a comp 101, college algebra and pre-caltrig for college algebra, some speech classes, psych, you know, sociology, things like that. So chemistry, AP chemistry is a big one. So we have a variety of courses all over the city. Some of the hardest part about that is getting someone with 18 credit hours in the subject area. So we've even started, funded through CTE in the Legacy Golf Tournament, providing scholarships to teachers and working with universities to try to get more teachers that have the, because most teachers, right? You might have a master's degree in curriculum and instruction. You don't have 18 hours in mathematics or English or history. But that's what you have to have to qualify to teach the dual-credit. So we're trying to also boost the number of teachers that can teach the dual-credit classes. Colleges also do a good job of trying to partner with us and say, hey, you don't have someone, so we will send, you know, a professor to you. And so that's part of the relationship that we're trying to build with the local universities is to also help funnel the teachers back the other direction and not just this, this direction.
And how, and how does the tuition piece work for those classes?
So it depends on the university that you partner with. Like WSU, they will do like $100 a credit hour. Or, so there's a cost associated with those that fluctuates between who the university partner is, lunch status, et cetera, how many credit hours it is. Like we have AP chemistry, that one, you can get up to five college credit hours just for that class. Some of the others are just one college credit hour. So it does fluctuate, but there is, there is typically some cost. It's still substantially cheaper than it would be to take the class at the university level. And you don't have to leave your high school to do it, which is, which is pretty convenient. There's, you know, your 30 kids in your college algebra class instead of 300 in a lecture hall somewhere, which is, which is pretty advantageous. The Early College Academy is very specific to one university and you will get, right, if you pass the classes, over 50 hours of college credit. So it's definitely much more intentionally focused. Whereas the others are, hey, you're in my algebra, you're in my college algebra class. Are you interested in earning dual-credit? And you have some kids in the class that will and you have some kids in the class that won't. That's the big difference between what goes on in the other high schools and the Early College Academy.
Thank you. Stan?
Yes, I just had a quick follow-up. Number one, this is one of our best-kept secrets that we have in the district. And that's one reason why I wanted to pull and bring a little attention to it. And I don't want to make the superintendent or our CFO nervous for two meetings in a row. But if we're looking at what we can make the biggest impact on, this is one that does. And it helps our families immensely. And I hope in the future we'll consider to give it the support it needs.
So a couple of things on that note, Stan. Susan and I get nervous every time you talk. I'm just kidding. Cha-ching, cha-ching.
That's the only reason Susan comes to the meeting now.
No, but seriously, great, great outcomes for kids. I do want to lift out one thing about the commitment that it takes. So this is, this is kind of on another plane than a lot of the college credit we offer. These kids are bussed, a lot of them, you know, bussed to Northwest. Zero hour is required as part of this. Summer classes are required as part of this. So this is not for, yeah, I'm not sure, maybe I want to do college. Like this is for a kid whose family really believes they're going to get essentially two years, their first two years of college paid for free. It's a great opportunity, but it is a commitment from the family. And I can't, I can't thank Friends University enough for what they've done for our kids because they give, they not only provide a low-credit-hour rate to the district, but they also provide, you know, a campus where they invite high school kids, you know, half a day and in the summer. And not all college campuses are open to a bunch of high school kids around there, right? So Dr. Carey, Dr. Todd have just been fantastic partners. And they, they're willing to brainstorm with us to figure out what we need to do to make things successful. So it's been a really, really good thing for kids. And hopefully, we can be creative and find some ways to continue to fund it, so.
I appreciate that update.
Do you want to make a motion?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I move that we take the recommended action on C one, Early College Academy.
I second.
It was moved by Stan and seconded by Kathy. Please raise your right hand if you approve. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, next item.
Next item, under Policy, Second Review, Proposed Updates of BOE Policies.
Okay, these are second, second reviews. So we will vote on these tonight. The policy P5506 and policy 7090. And you do have, and have been provided copies of those. Are there any questions or concerns?
Cheryl, one thing I believe, P5506 is to be voted on November 13th.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay, P5506. Correct? Okay.
We have to have a hearing.
Okay, so that, that one is moved to November. Thank you very much for correcting me. All right, but we are voting on policy 7090. Yes, yes, okay. Are there questions on that policy? That's our small unmanned aircraft systems kind of get us legal as we use drones in our district for a variety of reasons, including inspecting roads and so on. Okay, I'm seeing no questions. Is there a motion to accept this?
So moved.
It's moved by Kathy and seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Stan. If you approve of this policy, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Next item.
Next item, First Review, Proposed Update to Financial Services, Policy P3308.
Okay, and this is a first read. So as you have read through it, are there questions, concerns, things that you would like to ask administration to be able to bring it back to us the next time? I'm seeing nothing, so let's move this policy on to the next read at the next board meeting. Next item.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Hey, welcome. We're going to get you in and out if you're in good time.
Good evening, President Cheryl Logan, Vice President Diane Albert, and Superintendent Beilefeld. Tonight, I just wanted to share a couple of things that we've been working on. UTW, recently, we sent four peer consultants and one teacher to an NEA training to help our teachers pass the Praxis Test for their licensure. So they've been collecting resources. They've made a really super cute, like sheet that has all the different resources to help them pass their assessments for their license. And then where we met last Friday is to plan to do a training opportunity in the spring and maybe at this educator conference this summer to just help those teachers, especially the teachers that go through alternative licensure that are, have not passed their, their test yet. We had a few hundred books left from Open Streets. So we donated those to several classrooms. We opened it up to teachers, several elementary teachers and middle and high school teachers came to our office and gave them to them for their students and for their classrooms. Really happy to report the sped concerns from last meeting have been resolved. So I just want to say thank you to Gil, Sean, and Vince for addressing those concerns and taking care of those. And I also wanted to thank Diane and Julie. They came out to a listening session with our teachers last Monday and heard all their concerns and we appreciate it. And I know Hazel was going, is going to come out sometime soon. So thank you for coming out and speaking with our, our staff about their workload concerns. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
I am seeing no one here for that tonight, so next item.
Next item, Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you, Patrick. I'm going to list off some things that are going on that I just want people to know about. And then at the end, I want to talk a little bit about strategic planning and where we're at with that. So tonight, even though it's chilly, we have Band-Airama going on at South High. And unfortunately, it was the same night as the board meeting, so we couldn't go. But I'm sure our kids are enjoying that. We also are wrapping up the fall sports season. So I wanted to lift up some of our state competitors across the district. So in cross-country, on the boys' side at East High, we had Taylor Halcy and Ryan Sun, who is a senior and was sixth place in state cross-country. So he was our only medalist for the district. From Heights, Jack Hardy, and from Northwest, Elijah Edwards. And then on the girls' side, we had Sierra Johnson and Ruby Moore from East. And then from north, we had Mia Hirsch, Alexa Ornellis, and Nelly Puente. So those were our cross-country state qualifiers. In tennis, in girls' tennis, which is a fall sport, our only girl who placed is Elena Alvarez from Northwest High School. Shout out, that's Gil's daughter, so 11th place, good job, Elena. And then from heights, Isabella Cunningham, and from west, Leah Frazier. And then on the double side of girls' tennis, Cameron Stubbs and Kana Sparks. They placed 12th on, in the double side of things. And from, in girls' golf, Southeast had a great showing with freshman Alena Lamb getting 10th place in the state, the only person who placed for girls' golf. But they also had qualifying for state Lauren Floyd, Violet Bigley, Haley Moore, and Reese Hawkins, all who are underclassmen. So bright future for girls' golf at North, Northeast. Other exciting school news, Pleasant Valley Middle School is a finalist for the Wichita Business Journal's Great Places to Work competition. So we're excited for them and hopefully they win Best Places to Work. This past week, I and Diane and about 12 other WPS employees traveled to San Diego for the Council of Great School, City Schools Conference. We had four presentations that took place from our delegation. So eight of us presented on four different topics. And it was exciting. It was affirming. We, we are doing lots of really good things, especially in districts that are of similar size of us across the nation. The Council of Great City Schools has 78 members, mostly all the urban districts across the nation. So we, we stack up really well in what we do here at Wichita, so.
Did you give one?
We did not give one for CTE, so next year, I know. I'll bring my horn. On Friday, we are hosting Leadership Wichita. And so Leadership Wichita is put on by the Chamber. So it's about 40 leaders from all across the city who meet every other week for different professional activities across Wichita. So they will be shadowing some kids and seeing some classrooms that day. And they have been doing the principal-for-a-day activity over the past few weeks or a couple of months, I guess. So it'll be exciting to show off our district to local leaders. I did want to echo, well, thank you for Terry and Vince on their great job on the, on the presentation. What Terry said, you know, thank you for caring, really, really stands out. We're trying to do some things communications-wise to really tie in what we're doing. So with the board presentation on safety and security, I did a series of three questions on security entrances and with Delaina, who was here a minute ago, North, North High School security guard. I wrote my blog last week about restorative practices and a sense of belonging in the school. And then we have the board presentation. So we're trying to kind of tell the story in all different avenues for what we do as a district. But Terry and Vince did a great job of, you know, celebrating an ongoing thing, right? Safety is something we have to show up and do every day. It's not just something we check off a list. So I'd like to thank them for their, for their good work on that. And finally, tomorrow morning, you're going to receive in your email the Strategic Plan Report that was provided by KU. So this is the listening sessions, the 13 listening sessions that they conducted. It gives you kind of the overview, the recommendations, and then all the ins and outs of what every, every different demographic group spoke to. So at the top, it'll have a key, or a key findings and a summary. And then it'll have some recommendations. So Cheryl and Diane, as part of the planning team, have seen the document. But I wanted to share it with all. to share it with all of you. See, you can look through it at your leisure. This is what the planning team is using to make decisions on goals, so it'll give you a little bit of a basis for kind of where, where we head from there. This Wednesday is probably our most important meeting, because we're really getting down to what can be the hard decisions of narrowing the focus and which student outcome goals we focus on. So just wanted to give you an update on that, because next meeting, you'll get to see it for a first read. And then finally, Election Day on November 7th, so encourage everyone to get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, under Reports, Board of Education.
Okay. Ernestine?
Well, I wanted to thank all those board members who came to the East High 100-year anniversary. We are so proud of that big building, and at the time that it was made, it was certainly one of the spectacular ones in the Midwest. And it's still holding up, thanks to all of the repairs that we've done and all of the things the boards over the years have done to put the caulking in the cracks and this sort of thing. And I'm wearing East High blue tonight, you notice? And I understand that we're going to have ribbon cutting for the new health services. Would you tell us which day that is, that that's coming? Do you know?
Yes, that, so it's November 16, 9:30 at the Wichita South, Wichita, WSU Tech South Campus, which is the old Wichita Mall, that's how.
Right, it's on the Wichita Mall, yes. Well, that is one of the more exciting things that, that we are so excited about the fact that we do have so many pathways that we're opening up for our students. And I am, does anybody need to have me tell them how excited I am about our career program? And how disappointed I am that we didn't have a presentation at the Great City Schools? Because I really do think that we're doing something that is just unique, and I really think that, that national, national journals and national reporters need to know about what's going on here. And I also think, public, you need to know, this is really spectacular, what's going on in Wichita.
Thank you. Thank you. Stan?
No real report, other than I'd like to encourage the public to log in and view and, and look at our social media pages. Our team does a really great job. A lot of us will be talking about events we were at, and instead of, instead of me trying to recount each one I was at, I, I would encourage you to go on there and take a look and look at the many wonderful things that we're doing in this district. And they, not only do they report on it, but they really give you a good insight of what is, is going on. So I encourage you to check out all our media pages if you truly want to keep up on what's going on in the district.
Thank you. And we do have an excellent media program.
We do.
I, I, other than being out in schools, I've done four kind of different things this month. One of them was, I was invited to go to McConnell Air Force Base for a leadership tour. Board presidents in the area and superintendents were invited, and they took us out and showed us all around and showed us their STAR program that actually our kids are going through. It's a five-day program that's just excellent about STEM, and that was a fun day for me. I learned a lot, so it's always fun when you can go out and learn something new. We, we, several of us were at the golf tournament, Diane and Hazel and I all were there, and that tournament helped support the career, college career program that, that we heard about tonight. So the money is raised in a different kind of way, and then it's given to our students to help pay for CTE and college career credits. I, we also, this past week was National School Lunch Week, and so I was at Curtis eating lunch, chicken, sweet and sour chicken and rice with the middle school kids. Brought back very fond memories of middle school to me. And lastly, but certainly not least, I was at North High this week with the JAG program, their leadership installation of their new leaders for the JAG program here at North. I was so impressed with the students and how they spoke of their program and were enthused about it and were, what they were learning in that program as they move out and learn how to be good citizens and, and how to perform in a job. So great program, and we've got wonderful things going on in this district. Diane?
Okay. Many things were already talked about, so I'll skip over those. I attended a conference with Hazel, hosted by the Fundamental Learning Center, where they brought in Emily Hanford, who's the author of a podcast called Sold a Story. And that's where she discusses what teaching methods are best for students to learn and how to read and what teaching methods are best for students. And there's an emphasis towards dyslexia as well. At that conference, it was very encouraging, because I had a number of our instructional coaches come up and introduce themselves and say hi, and just that they were there, they were, they were all excited about the work that they were there to learn about. And then throughout the conference, the speaker would say, here's something that your districts need to adopt to increase reading outcomes. And I'd kind of look over at our instructional coaches, and they'd be like, give me a big thumbs up, that we're already doing that here. And so that was very exciting to see and hear from them directly that the reading curriculum that we're doing here in the district is excellent, it's well-done, it's well-executed, and so hands, just a big shout-out to everybody that's part of that emphasis and focused on our reading outcomes. So thank you to everybody. I also did attend the Council of Great City Schools, and this is an organization for large urban school districts across the country to learn and share best practices. And one of the things that was very common throughout that week was every time somebody would ask where we were from, and we'd say Wichita, many times, people are like, oh, yeah, somebody from my team's waiting to talk to one of you guys. We want to talk about security, we want to talk about communications, you know, we want to talk about X, Y, or Z. And, and so other districts from around the nation really do seek us out to find out what we're doing here, what our best practices are, how we're executing that, how we're communicating that to our district and to our community at large. So, so to the WPS staff, thank you guys for a job well done. Thank you for, for an excellent reputation across the nation, so hats off to you guys. But I do want to say that there were a number of breakout sessions that were specifically for board members, and so I have to say that I, I had to miss all of our presentations because I was at, at board breakout sessions. And so some of the sessions that I did attend, I do want to read these off, because they were very impactful. I went to a joint task force on Black and Latina young women and Black and Latino young men, school finance leadership, governance and management, improved student outcomes and why governance matters, how schools are charting a course for effective governance, using strategic planning to advance district outcomes, using data to analyze school district performance, and artificial intelligence, how schools can navigate AI in education. And so throughout those, they really take a stand that we, as a board, we need to lead from a stance that school systems only exist to improve student outcomes, and that student outcomes do not change until adult behaviors change, starting with the board. School boards exist to create conditions for improved student outcomes, because some of our students depend on the school system to be their bridge to a greater future. And so with that, I'm done with my board report, but it was an excellent conference. Thank you to everybody for allowing me to attend and learn many great things that we'll talk about in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Hazel?
As Cheryl mentioned, I attended also the Legacy Golf Tournament, and the thing that was really impressive to me was all the community partners who were there to support our district, and I think it was a sellout. I don't, I think everything was full, and so it was really great to see all those people there. I also, as talking about continued relationships with community partners, I attended with Diane the Kansas Economic Conference, where there were many, many leaders in our community there, and we were able to speak to them, and they're always, they're always wanting to know and, and compliment all the great things that are going on in our district, and it's always a very proud moment to, you know, when, when they're celebrating us. I went to the East High 100-year celebration, and I drove Ms. Ernestine and Ms. Julie, and Ernestine has her wave down, and
That's true.
She got her wave down, and I think
I had my candy.
She, she has her arm is worn, is all in shape, because she was throwing candy. I also attended the Emily Hanford Reading Conference. It was good to see we had, I think, over 30 teachers who took advantage of this opportunity that were excited to be there. And I had the opportunity to receive the first Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation from Sedgwick County Commissioners. And that'll be all.
Thank you. Julie?
Yeah, I have just four quick items tonight. First of all, I believe it was at our last board meeting, we had a member of the public speak, and I just want to reinforce what they spoke about. I think it's something that all of us as board members can get behind, and that is the need for our state to fully fund special ed. So I just, I think, I think that's something that all of us can probably agree on, and I just think it's something important as we move through this next year to, to do what we can to work toward that improving. Second of all, I want to echo with Superintendent Bellafield that before we meet the next time, we will have elections. And, you know, I don't, I don't think I really need to encourage people to vote, because I think anybody who's watching this school board meeting are people that are involved anyway, and I'm sure they are getting out to vote. But I do just want to reiterate that it is our privilege to live in the United States of America and to be able to express our opinion through casting our votes, and then it's also a responsibility as good citizens to get out and vote. Third, kind of a personal thing, a good friend of mine that works in the district, works at West High, and he had his orals today for his doctoral degree in leadership from KU. So we have a new doctor at West High, Dr. Arthur Ballas. So congratulations, shout-out to my friend Art. And fourth, we did have the opportunity to listen to teachers, as Katie shared about Diane and I attending a listening session. And you know it's tough out there. We're, we're all here to serve kids, we're all here because we love kids, and we want to provide good outcomes for our students. But our teachers are the ones that are on the first line, doing, doing the heavy, heavy lifting relative to that work. And I, it, I don't want it to seem trite, I very sincerely want to thank our teachers in this district and want them to know that I hear them and I love them and want to do whatever I can to support the great work that they do in our district. And that's not to minimize other people, leaders, and everybody knows I love the school service center guys, and, you know, not to, not to diminish what all the rest of the staff does, paras, you know, everybody, but the, our teachers are our, our frontline, working with kids. It's, it's, it's a rough day out there, and I, I support and thank and love you, teachers.
Thank you. Kathy?
I don't have a whole lot to add to this. This has been a great sharing. We have a very active board, and I think the community wants to see that. They want to see us out there with them, because we are in partnership. I had the honor and the privilege to watch Hazel receive the proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day from Sedgwick County Commissioners, and I, that was just a really proud moment for me, Hazel. You, you bring a lot of culture and a lot of color to this board, and I appreciate you very much. I, oh, Stealth, I went to Stealth and, at Anderson Elementary School, and Holly is doing a magnificent job in that department. In fact, I asked Lauren, I said, you need to go back to your boss and see if you can't do a presentation to the board on the Stealth program. This is a fully federal-funded program, and there's a waitlist for the students to get on that program, and I was able to watch them interact with one another socially, academically. They continued, but in a fun way. It wasn't so structured as it is in the classroom, and it, it was just a joy to be around students that were happy. Kids basically are very happy, and most of them, and I'm in the classroom about three times a week, because I'm still subbing, and, you know, those teachers are amazing, and I tell those teachers in the schools where I'm subbing that I appreciate them, and they're actually looking out for me, and I'm like, oh, no, don't look out for me. I, I mean, I, I can teach anything except for sped, and, I mean, I'm not qualified, so when those teachers are there and they show up for those kids that have extra needs, I'm, I'm just amazed at the talent and the skills and the desires that those teachers have. I participated in a fundraiser, and it's called GOTCHA. And what was cool about it is that I was able to be around some of our students that were children of the adults that, and GOTCHA stands for Get Off the Couch and Heal America. And it is an organization to help bring awareness to child trafficking. So it was a delight to be part of that, but it was even greater to see the kids that were also there to serve and to help in, in that ordeal on that Saturday. I was able to judge the Miss Augusta Pageant, seeing some wonderful young adults and their, what they said to us in their questions that they were asked in their interviews that we listened to them. They're no different than the kids in Wichita. So I do know that we have exceptional students in our district, as well as the outlining districts, so I wanted to say that. And I think that, that's it for me. I'm looking forward to the November month.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to November 8th.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Ernestine?
I just want to piggyback on the superintendent, and I believe it was Julie, also promoted about voting. I wanted to let the public know, and all who are listening and all who might, you spread the word, the advanced voting sites are open now, so that you can vote at any one of those until Monday at noon. And then if you don't get vote by then, then you go to the one that's in your neighborhood, and you have to go to the one that you're assigned to. But I want to let you know that the advanced voting site, so that you can go to Edgemore or different places that have it. I don't have that, the addresses right now, but the election office does, and there's one in all parts of the city.
Thank you. Next item, Patrick?
Next item, under Miscellaneous, New Business.
I'm seeing none. Next item.
Next item, Board of Education Requests.
And I'm seeing no one with a request tonight. Next item.
Next item, Executive Session.
Diane?
I move the board recess to an executive session to discuss an expulsion appeal pursuant to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:45.
Second.
The motion was made to adjourn to executive session by Diane and seconded by Stan. Please raise your hand. Motion passes seven zero. We are in executive session.
The board will consider appeal hearing case number two.
Hazel?
After hearing all the testimony and reviewing the statements of witnesses and interested parties present at the hearing, it is the recommendation of the hearing panel that the Board of Education uphold the findings of the hearing officer.
Second. It was moved, it was moved by Hazel and seconded by Stan that we uphold the hearing officer's decision. Please raise your hand if you approve. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. We will see you on the 13th of November.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah. We probably should have a motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay, is anybody voting against it? If not, raise your hand. We approve seven, six zero. Thank you. You'd think it was later than it was.